Diagram of three things or a three-legged stool of what Exploration Place is. I think we bring quality of life to the community. So that the visitation that comes is a pretty good measure of the community's support and appreciation for Exploration Place. Um, second leg of the stool is the educational work that we do. Wichita is the number one metro area in the whole United States of America for the number of people that have STEM-related jobs. And so a lot of our educational work is directed towards keeping us number one. And then we have the tourism economic impact of Exploration Place. Um, you make an investment in us every year. And I hope you see that returned in quality of life and the educational impact, but also in terms of pure dollars and the jobs that we create through the tourists and visitation we bring to town. Um, as you are well aware, um, the pandemic really affected, you know, the whole community. And for Exploration Place, it was kind of a perfect storm. Uh, we're an indoor attraction in a, in a time when people didn't want to be indoors. We address a lot of kids and youth at a time when people really want to look after our young people. And we're really hands-on, so, um, even when we reopened last July after the, the hard lockdown, last fall was still a really tough time. We were looking at twenty percent, thirty percent of normal attendance. Um, but the, um, as I've reported to you before, I'm really proud of how our education team especially responded. We were able to pivot and basically improvise a very significant distance learning program that supported our local schools and our community through a time of great need for everyone. And what we were able to accomplish last year was very significant in terms of the numbers and the reach. But it's also left us a legacy of, we've opened a really great door of opportunity there. The, the, um, virtual learning is something that I think is here to stay. It's a really efficient way of getting high-quality science and STEM education into classrooms. And, um, as, as we'll touch on a little bit later, there are, there are some, um, that is starting now to, to, it's starting to become clear how that will be part of our long-term future. Um, the really good news is that since the spring of this year, we've seen a really strong recovery at Exploration Place. And since July, um, we've actually been exceeding our 2019 numbers. So in terms of the core business, in terms of attendance and memberships and the summer camps and some of those really big, big and important things that we do, uh, we're now actually running ahead of where we were before the pandemic. So, um, one of the biggest, um, messages I wanted to get across to you is that we feel that we're back on track and the worst of it is, is in the rearview mirror, hopefully. Um, there are still a few areas of small concern. We really want those field trips to come back. In a, in a normal year, we've got fifteen to twenty thousand kids will be coming, uh, out to Exploration Place for an amazing experiential field trip. And that's still, um, we're gonna have to work really hard to, to rebuild that habit. And, um, so we're working on that with the school districts. Facility rentals are still a little bit slow for us. And some of the larger events, like normally this weekend, we've got this commu-, this beloved event of the community called Gingerbread Village. And usually four or five thousand people would be out at Exploration Place, participating in the holiday celebration. But that's still canceled and some of the other larger events, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get them back on track. But in general, um, I think I've, I've been here in the past and expressed, you know, a tone of concern about where we're at. But I, I, I wanna tell you, we're really happy about how, how we're coming out of, out of this tough time. Looking to the future, um, you, as, as I think, as become painfully aware to the commission, you, you're our Board of Health. And, um, I wanted to talk to you a little bit about, uh, the next big exhibit that is gonna be opening at Exploration Place. We will be inviting you to, um, if all, all stays on track sometime in April of next year, to the grand opening of a, of a new permanent exhibit called Health Inside Out. So I wanted to give you a little briefing on what that is all about and what to expect with it. Um, it actually is a, uh, an exhibit that we started working on before anyone had even heard of COVID-19. Um, we felt that health was an appropriate subject for Exploration Place to work with our, with our community on educationally. And one of the things that we learned in the journey is that of all the states in the USA, Kansas has fallen the, the most in the national health rankings. We used to be top ten and now we're twenty-seventh, um, and, and, and falling. So, working with a committee of experts, um, we started to look at, okay, how can we play a part in, in turning that around? And we feel we can help educate our kids and get some good messages out there in terms of healthy behaviors. Also get them thinking about careers in health, which is gonna be over, I think, over the next generation, making sure we've got a workforce, um, that, that, that's interested and motivated to work in health. Um, and also making sure we do all of this equitably. Um, I wanna give a shout out to Adrian Burn. I think you all know is a rock star in, in the county staff. And she was part of the committee that has been advising us, um, in terms of expert content through this whole process. Um, it's going to be in the grand hall. So if you walk across the bridge into Exploration Place, it's that first big room that you reach. Historically, we have kept that clear of permanent exhibits and, um, but, uh, and used it for events. But because some of the other spaces in the building are now used primarily for events, we felt that we can basically find a higher use for this as a permanent exhibit space. So that's where it's gonna be. I'll share a few things that are gonna be in it. This is definitely, you, you're seeing an exhibit in preparation here. Um, okay. Uh, Bel-Tech Ron, uh, you know, we, we build helicopters here in, in, in Wichita. They, uh, we're, we're known as the air capital of the world. But, uh, I think often people think of fixed-wing aeroplane, but Bell, Textron are expanding their presence here in Wichita. And they have donated this amazing, uh, Bell 407 helicopter to us. We're gonna, it, it's in the workshop right now being equipped as a, an hands-on exhibit that the kids can get in. And it'll teach all about what it's like to be an EMS technician. And, uh, kids will be able to take blood pressure and, and role-play in terms of rescuing people from, from emergency situations. Um, you might be familiar, we've got Big Mouth at Exploration Place. Kids love that exhibit, it just happened, larger-than-life thing. So in Health Inside Out, we're gonna have Big Ears. And, uh, and this one is a, is a big eye that's gonna be in there. That, um, that, that sort of larger-than-life, it draws kids in and gets them wanting to explore. So they'll be able to look at, um, the world through an eye and, and realize, hey, it's actually upside down. It's our brain that makes it, makes the world the right way up. I got a hunch this one's gonna be the most popular exhibit. It's, it's based on the classic game Whack 'Em All and it's called Whack a Virus. And so we can spend the next decade smacking that coronavirus with a big mallet. And, um, uh, but there is, you know, one of the, I, I, I've, I've been so sympathetic to some of the challenges you guys have faced over the last eighteen months. And it's affected places like us too, because we've been challenged to, to just understand where is, where, where is science in a, in a global pandemic? And one of the nice things is the research is telling us that museums are the most trusted source of information anywhere. There are, people trust a place like us more than news media or social media or whatever. And that's a very precious thing that we've got. And, and we don't wanna blow it, but we do feel it's appropriate for us to talk about vi-, about the science of vaccines and the science of, of, that's been associated with pandemic that we've been through. There's, there's actually several of the exhibits are adaptations of classic things that you would find in a family entertainment center. Like we're approaching nutrition and healthy eating habits through Ski Ball. That, you know, that is, that's a seventy-five-year-old game. But you'll get more points for making healthy eating choices as you, as you play Ski Ball. And another one that's a direct adaptation of essentially an arcade game is the Emotional Roller Coaster. This is, we have, we're adapting this, um, simulator, which is a roller coaster simulator. But this is actually our mental health exhibit. Uh, as we work with the advisory committee, we wanted to explore how Exploration Place can start to play a positive role in addressing this, this community-wide, uh, concern that we have about mental health. And as this pertains to young kids, which, which is a big part of what we do, the advisory committee said it's really important to, to start the journey of health, of mental health education, that kids be able to name their emotions and recognize their own emotions. So through this device and the, and, and using emojis in a very clever way, um, we, I think if we're gonna win an award for this exhibit, we're gonna win it for, for the overall exhibit. We're gonna win it for Emotional Roller Coaster. I'm really excited by how this is, this is all coming together. So, uh, look out for your invite. We will be, we'll be very proudly, uh, unveiling that in the spring. Uh, part of the project is it's co-located with the Kemper Life Science Theatre. Right there, we've got a hundred and forty-five-seat theatre, which for the last twenty-one years, we've been doing daily life science shows. And we've reached more than a million people with those. But the, the facility's got quite tired and worn out. So we're gonna, we're replacing the seats, we're giving it a makeover. Um, and that'll be a much nicer space that we'll, that we'll be able to see next year. Um, and one of the things that we're gonna be doing in the Life Science Theatre is, again, back on the subject of mental health, we're going to do a life science show on the subject of mental health. And we recently got a grant from, uh, a federal grant from Muse-, Institute Museum of Library Services that is going to help us fund the development of that. Um, it's a really great program they've done at the Science Museum of, uh, Ontario in Ottawa. That, that, it's, it's a life science show that can also be broadcast on distance learning, um, anywhere in Canada. And so we're gonna, part of the funding is we're gonna go and visit that. And we'll bring, uh, our own message to a similar set of ideas. And, and again, that's us trying to be, apply our mission to be responsive and help the community in an area that needs some help. Okay, as I wrap up, um, I did wanna talk a little bit in conclusion about our strategic plan. The Board of Exploration Place approved a five-year strategic plan back in April. And I know I met, uh, one-on-one with each of you to get your input on that. And we also interviewed more than fifty other members of the community and did a huge member survey. We made a very small but significant change to our mission statement. It used to end by saying for all ages. And we took the word ages off just to emphasize and recommit ourselves to, we sh-, we surely want to reach all ages, but we want to reach every corner of the community, including some of the, the underserved parts of the community. Um, this time next year, um, the first big move in our strategic plan is we're gonna make some changes to the traveling exhibit gallery. As you know, having three changing exhibits per, per year has been the beating heart of our success in our programming each year. There's a new style of exhibit that's really sweeping across America right now. You might have seen it in things like this, there are five of these Van Gogh exhibits that are traveling around. One's coming to Kansas City next month. Um, it's a, it's a different style of exhibit that's very immersive. It's projection-based, it fills the space, it's very sort of Instagrammable. There's a, there's, there's a few Monet exhibits going out. Now, we're not an art museum, we, we are a science and technology center. But this technology, this style of exhibit, I think, is very compelling when we start to apply it to science learning and to kids. So we're, we're, we can see around the world, there are some really cool things. This happened, this is a place called the Electric Playhouse in Albuquerque, New Mexico. Um, which is a, which is applying some of this technique to, to kids. I absolutely adore this. It's, it's from a Japanese organization called Team Lab. It's called the Sketch Aquarium. You might, there's been a viral video going around for a couple of years about this. The kids, they draw their fish or their jellyfish or whatever. They scan it in and they can see their own creation in the aquarium. And that, things like that are really compelling. So these facility changes that we've committed to do in September of next year are all about getting us ready to be able to do cool things like this. And I, I do wanna give a shout out to Cedric County Zoo. I, I feel that this Wild Lights thing has been a storming success for them, but also for us and for our whole community, because it shows that if you can reach for these kind of experiences that are, that are compelling, people are gonna flock to them. And we're gonna start to increase our tourism impact. So, um, you know, good job to the zoo and, and we're definitely, uh, following that inspiration. Um, finally, we are also looking at our twenty acres. Um, as you, as you may know, Exploration Place isn't just the, the building sitting there on the river. We occupy the property, um, all the way from, from the River Vista Apartments up to the Keeper. And as we got into the strategic plan, we've, we felt that probably the biggest move we wanna make over the next five years is to develop the outdoor spaces so we can bring some balance. Um, so that expo-, ex-, right now Exploration Place is predominantly a place you go on a bad weather day. Um, but to be a place that families and the community would like to come to on a good weather day. We, this is probably a whole nother presentation that I think ultimately I should, I should come and brief you on. But, um, we've got a steering committee working really hard. Commissioner Lopez, thank you for being part of that. Um, that, that is, over the winter is gonna be working on the detailed planning of, uh, of what this is gonna be. But I, we're starting to see some examples around the country and around the world that I think could be really, really bring an inspirational project to, uh, to Wichita. Uh, so with, that's my formal remarks over and, um, very happy to take, take your questions.
Thank you, Adam. Commissioner Howell has a question to go.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, Adam, also, uh, number one, thank you for coming and, and sharing all that with us today. I'm, I'm curious, what was your, uh, beginning date at, at EP? When did you actually arrive here to Wichita?
Um, it was Veterans Day, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, so not too long, right before the pandemic started its chaos here, right? I'll just, I just wanna say, uh, Jan Luth's timing was pretty interesting. She left right at the right time apparently. And I'm sorry for you having to come in, uh, basically at a very challenging time. But you've really, you've obviously mastered the challenge and you did extremely well and came out even stronger. And I think that's a very commendable to you personally. I think that you're the perfect person for this science museum. Um, I love your character, I love the fact that you, you're a visionary. You know how to handle, uh, difficult things and, and you've done, you've just been a tremendous leader. So thank you for all you do. Um, in fact, one of the things I would say about you, which I, I know that you would agree with, that others may not, may not know about you, that you're, you're an aviation enthusiast. And that's a great fit for the, for the aviation capital of the world. So I think that that's a tremendous fit, so, love that. Um, I definitely wanna go and whack the virus. I put a big highlight on this one. I don't know when that's gonna be available, but I wanna get a video of me beating that virus hard. And hopefully can handle, uh, people like me who really angrate that virus.
I said to the exhibit company, can you deliver that one to us like a couple of months early? So we can get some videos and it'll help build a buzz for it. So we'll, we'll see.
I love the connection to the emotional roller coaster. I think that's a, that's something I didn't know that was gonna happen. I think that's, uh, that's gonna be a great fit for one of our biggest priorities here in Central County. It's mental, uh, mental health issues. And so I think that's a tremendous, uh, tremendous fit. I do wanna ask you, um, uh, well, first of all, say to Patrick Tuttle, thank you for also for your leadership. Thank you for being, for being here today as well. Um, and to the board. And I, I wanna just say, as I reflect on my time here at the county, um, one of the highlights of my entire time serving here was being on that board. So I wanna say, it's a great experience. And I love, I love the Science Museum, I love the fact that they are science-based. We talked about twenty-twenty especially, follow the science. And we have a, a, a place right now where that is really what we do, we follow the science. I, I wanna, I wanna, the next thing on our agenda today is talking about the legislative platform. I wanted to ask you a couple of questions real quickly, because there's one item on there that's on, it's an Exploration Place, uh, initiative. That's dealing with sales tax. And I guess I don't understand, i-, i-, across the nation and other places, other states, other communities, and even here in Central County, I guess there's disparity on, on whether sales tax is charged or not charged. Did you wanna reflect on that at all today? I'd like to understand exactly what you're thinking and, and what's, what's the reason for doing this today?
Yeah, we, we, we had made a request, um, to look at, um, the Kansas statutes relative to sales tax on memberships at Exploration Place. Um, if you look at this, how the statute is currently written, there's an exemption on memberships to gyms, YMCA, Boys and Girls Clubs, um, zoos. Lots of organizations are specifically listed there, um, but we're not included in that. And, and I, I think it would certainly be consistent with the intent of the statute if we were able to modify that language to allow, uh, Exploration Place or, or Science and Technology Centers. It's basically to, to give a small break to people that, to families that are investing in the education of their kids through a, through a membership to a, an organization like the zoo or, um, like the YMCA or whatever.
If this was to pass, do you anticipate any adjustments in your membership rates?
I, I, I don't think so. I, it, um, I will, mm, mm, as you brought it up, I'll expand on my strategy relative to membership a little bit though. We are super low right now. It's eighty-five dollars for a family membership to Exploration Place. Comparatively, I think the zoo is a hundred and sixty. And I've, I am driving the message to my staff from day one. Membership is a big deal to me and I wanna keep it amazing value. Um, so I, as you might have heard me speak on some other occasions, I've raised prices in other parts of Exploration Place. But very consciously, I wanna hold the price of membership down, um, because I want it to be an amazing, overwhelming value. Um, we've, we've started studying, by the way, how often our families use the membership. We started, we're, since April, we've been able to measure how often people use their memberships. The leading family right now has already been to Exploration Place more than forty times since April. So this, you know, this thing get, this, the member, that's tremendous value for eighty-five dollars, right? So I'm not gonna, I, I, I can't cut the price, but, but effectively, we are cutting it by not raising it, if that makes sense.
Yes, my, my one question would be this, because I love data and I love, I love analysis. And so I, I guess if I was approaching this idea, I would, I would like to know from, from people, was, you know, was paying sales tax a factor in your mind as to whether or not you would, you would wanna buy a membership at Exploration Place? And if I understand correctly, you don't charge sales tax on, on, on daily admission.
No, we do, we do, we have to charge sales tax on, on daily admission also.
Very good. And then, anyway, it might be nice to have some data to find out whether or not that would change someone's decision whether or not to join or to, or to visit Exploration Place and have that data. Um, to me, it would be, it would be important, because of course, we know sales tax goes to support primarily local government. And a small portion goes to, a lot of it goes to the state, but a lot of that gets turned around to benefit local government as well. So, you know, we're talking about a lot of, uh, spending, I should say, a lot of appropriation requests on our platform today. Um, the one thing that stands out differently is, is a, is a reduction in tax revenue to the state of Kansas and ultimately to Central County. Um, along with that. So again, we wanna be very careful, our messaging needs to be consistent and, and, uh, and, uh, so I, to the extent that the, the sales tax does change someone's decision whether or not to participate or, you know, visit or become a member of Exploration Place, I think that would be really good data to have. And with, without that data, um, I can, I can kind of suppose it this thing, but I don't really know, you know, how accurate my thoughts would be on that. So it, it'd be good to have that data if it were possible to get that. But anyway, thank you again for all you do. I, I, I'm a huge fan of yours and I love Exploration Place. And I, and I'm very proud of you for all you do here and I'm proud of it for being part of our community. Thank you, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, thank you both for being here. I know you guys are both really busy, so I appreciate it. And I reiterate a lot of things that Commissioner Howell just said, just to thank you for what you guys put back into the community. I've, you guys know, but maybe not everybody else does. My family's huge fans of Exploration Place. We've been members for a long time. My, I remember taking my oldest daughter there as a toddler and running around in the castle. And, and, and so it's just always brought a lot of joy to my life. And, and I know other lives in, in the community as well, so thank you for that. The health thing that's coming, I'm, I'm really excited about. I mean, not only because it's going to, um, just put health in conversations at a younger age, but really put in minds of kids who might not otherwise think about health as a career, um, really start kind of implementing that. And as we see the workforce issues that we're having just across the nation with health, I really think this is something that could help address that. Um, Adam, I think you're an awesome leader and you're innovative. And, and just the turnaround at Exploration Place through COVID and what you guys have been able to offer as far as virtual learning is just, it's been amazing to watch. And so I thank you so much for that. Um, I guess I do just wanna know, so we can remain as best partners as we can with you, what can we do to help Exploration Place continue to succeed and grow? And, and how can we be a part of that?
Yeah, well, um, first of all, thanks, thanks for the kind comments and thanks for your service on, uh, uh, on our Board of Trustees. And to you, Commissioner Howell, for your, for your past service on our board. You mentioned Jan Luth earlier, that she left me a very stable organization. The most valuable thing she left me was a fantastic board. Um, I, I can be so much more productive and we can do amazing things with the organization because we've got a great governance structure. And I should, I should also mention that County Manager Tom Stolson, Assistant County Manager Tim Kaufman are part of our board. And I appreciate your everyday help, um, in what, what we do. Um, in terms of answering your question, um, the, if you, the, the county has been incredibly helpful. I cannot imagine having tried to steer the organization through the pandemic without the association we've got, we have, we've had with the county. It's provided an underlying stability that has been really invaluable to us. And as we look to the future, um, hopefully we can maintain that stability because I need, you know, as well as a good board, I need a certain base to build the organization on. And we absolutely appreciate the investment that the county makes in Exploration Place every year. Hopefully, you can see that through different dimensions, there's a really good return on that investment. And, um, so I, I think my short answer to your question is more of the same would be great.
Okay, thank you. Um, I am just curious, a while back, we talked about, um, possibly doing a study with WSU to see the economic impact of, of the zoo and Exploration Place kind of combined. Is that, can I get an update on?
I had talked with Misty about that project and I'll, I'll check with her again to see what the status is. I think we have to put a formal request in to do it if we wanna do both, but we'll work on it.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you, Adam. Thank you, Patrick.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, thank you, Adam, for being here today. Um, I am really excited about this emotional roller coaster. What are the ages that it's designed for?
Um, any exhibit at Exploration Place, you, we're sort of designing on two levels. One is sort of the macro level that literally anybody ought to be able to, to, you know, so everyone from the youngest kids to adults. And one of the things that we always have to think about is ADA accessibility. So every single exhibit we ever install has to be audited for, for disabled access as well. So we want everyone to go and it should be fun for adults. But the sweet spot we're aiming for, I think, would be elementary and middle-school age kids. That's, that's the educational message that's built in there. It's gonna be fun for everybody, but the messaging is targeted at, at that younger age, age group.
Is there a, can we get like a test of it? Can I come, I wanna test it out, I wanna see what it's like.
Um,
Well,
Okay, well, I, I can, I can synthesize this test. If you wanna go on the virtual roller coaster simulator, go to Dave and Buster's, uh, here in town. If you walk in the door, it's the first thing that you see. But that's for fun, okay? We have literally bought the same machine, but our software geniuses, they're creating this custom thing for us that's got the education on it and the emojis and things like that. If you like, I've got a really kind, I've got a lot more visuals and I've got a rough, um, animation of what it's gonna look like. I can send you that if you like.
Well, I'm sold. I wanna get a membership. I'm thinking, is it an annual thing or is it a calendar year thing? If I were to buy it today, do I have to buy it again in January?
No, it, it, it's three hundred and sixty-five days from the day of purchase.
Great, that is a real steal. Um, the activation of the river that you guys are planning to do, I am super impressed with that. When you showed us at the downtown board, if you guys haven't seen that, I would love to have another, um, update of that. Um, sometime maybe at a staff meeting or, you know, coming up. I think that is exactly what this community has been talking about for a very long time. Um, I'm, I'm just, I'm really thrilled to see that you guys are working on that. What, what is it, like a five-million-dollar project? What's the total capital campaign? Way more than that.
Yeah, it's, we haven't costed it yet. What, I, I'm trying to lead the project to a point where next spring, we'll have designs and budgets and things like that. So I'm going off comparables right now. We can look around the country. I, I mean, I think because you've seen some of my more detailed comments, if, if you want a comparable, what they did at the Gathering Place down in Tulsa, Oklahoma is an amazing thing for their city, for their community. And, and if we can do half as good a job as that at Exploration Place, it's gonna be amazing. So we s-, we've got a five-acre plot of land we're looking to develop. And, um, they spent down there, the heart of the Gathering Place is also a five-acre plot and they spent sixteen-point-five million dollars on that. So it's, it's a lot of money. Um, but I feel compared to the cost of, for example, building another building, which is one of the options we looked at, is that it's potentially really good value for money. And just, as I mentioned, potentially brings a balance to our, our business and also gives the community something really awesome that they can do on the riverfront.
Yeah, I'm, I'm excited to see that. What, what's the timeframe that you're looking at for completion?
My, my dream scenario is that we open this in the year twenty-twenty-five, which is the twenty-fifth anniversary of Exploration Place. I think that's, I think that, that gives us enough time to raise the funds and, and do it to a really high-quality standard.
Incredible things happening in this community. Um, just one last thing, you got the Rock the Dome coming up, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh with, uh, Pink Floyd. That's gonna be pretty cool. Are you sold out of that?
Yeah, the, the, um, the dome is a really interesting thing. When I joined Exploration Place two years ago, When I joined Exploration Place two years ago, there was a question, should some science centers have even removed their large format theater? Science Museum of, of Indianapolis, they just put a dinosaur exhibit in, in their dome. And I said to the board at that time, I got a hunch that, that this could be a really amazing thing for us. And I am, two years in, I am now utterly convinced of it. Um, that we, we've, we're, again, in the interest of time, I didn't go deep into this, but you, you're all invited, I think in your inboxes, you've been invited to a, a dome movie screening. And I think you, you're coming.
Oh, yeah, I'm coming to that.
Yeah, um.
Immediately reply.
So we're going to show an amazing film. It's, they discovered sixty reels of IMAX footage of the Apollo eleven moon landing. So we're going to show some of that. But I'm going to give you a sneak peek at some of the other things we're doing in that dome. We've been filming our own film, um, all summer long, since April, we've been filming a, a film for Exploration Place. It's going to be, it's going to be a love letter to our community. And it's spine chillingly good and I'm going to show you some of that footage. And so I'll, if, if you'll forgive me, I'll, I'll answer some of your question about the dome. There's, there's, there's a bigger vision coming together there that's really exciting.
Well, thank you for being here, thank you, Patrick, for your service too. Exciting stuff, thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you, one more thing real quick. I, I was going to bring up at the end about the Kansas movie and so I'm so glad you did because I can't wait to see that, I've seen some just shots of what this drone has shot and it's going to be amazing in that theater space. But, um, also to talk about memberships and how great of a price it is, can you explain that it's not just a membership to Exploration Place, but really kind of what that, what else comes with a yearly membership?
Yeah, the, as well as essentially being a, you get in Exploration Place many times as you want all year round, there's an amazing reciprocal program, we're, we're a member of the Association of Science and Technology Centers. So your Exploration Place membership gets you in basically every other major science museum in the country. So that means you go, you go on vacation to Chicago, your family's going to save your eighty-five dollars just by going in the Museum of Science and Industry or the Perot Museum down in Dallas. And, you know, there are some big hitting, high value things that are, it's, it's literally you're getting free to all of those. And, you know, we have, we have to honor that on our side. I think in a given year, we usually let three or four thousand people in from the other museums, but it's, I think it works really good as part of membership value.
And then one more thing that's coming up that I'm really excited about is you guys are playing Christmas Vacation, which will be really fun to watch, so I'm, I'm really happy about that one. But, um, I appreciate you guys being here again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Adam, for, I enjoyed meeting you originally when you were considering coming here. And I'm glad you landed and glad you've adjusted to moving here and you've become quite a positive asset for our community. And as you know, as we've become friends, I'm, I stand ready to, to continue to help where, where I can.
Yeah, I, I want to thank you also for, um, being tremendous supporter. In particular, you've, you've, as, as, as we both know, you've been helping me with some of the, some introductions that are helping us raise the funds for Health Insight, and I really, really appreciate that.
Absolutely, that's what we're supposed to do. And then, Patrick, good to see you and thanks for you and please share with the board our appreciation for, for all that the board has been doing. So I don't see any other comments, so thank you again for the presentation, make a motion to receive and file. There's a motion to receive and file. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item B, discussion of the twenty twenty-two Cedric County Legislative Platform.
Good morning, Commissioners, Akeem Asher, Communications Director. Uh, so we put together a packet, uh, from our conversation yesterday to kind of dwindle down, uh, some of these issues into priority on that first page and then supporting on the second page. And I've got a copy to all of you as well. I'd like to introduce Jason Watkins and Jessica from Watkins Public Strategies. They're here for comment, uh, as well and questions. So looking at the platform, Commissioners, um, under the first one, we've kind of led off with the priority issue number one, uh, being critical funding for mental behavioral health issues affecting Cedric County. Uh, under that, we've placed ninety-eight Suicide Prevention Lifeline Funding, uh, as a top priority under the overarching mental health and behavioral health issue. That's followed by strengthening and enhancing the Medicaid Safety Net Model in Kansas, with a number of items underneath to include, uh, support of the Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinics, or CCH, I think it's supposed to be BC, model in Kansas. Addressing the needs of the uninsured and underinsured, uh, that's restoring the Promise Act. And so there's a fiscal note there to support a three million increase in funding for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. There's support, Community Crisis Center funding, uh, we just need the fiscal note on that, as we talked about yesterday. We're working with our departments, uh, to make sure that we get that, uh, before you all approve it that first week in December. Uh, an enhancement of Medicaid rates for behavioral health, this is that four percent rate increase that we talked about, which would, uh, bring approximately twelve million dollars in additional funding, uh, to providers. The next bullet there, Commissioners, is to support workforce initiatives to increase medical and clinical resources, followed by support for a regionalized state mental health, uh, facility. Uh, I think it's been identified, there's two hundred and twenty-one bids that are needed, uh, throughout the state, fifty of those here in Cedric County. And so we're asking for funding to support, um, those bids here, uh, in our region. Under corrections, so this is the second main legislative priority, priority, um, that we've got. Uh, this is the, uh, ask for increased funding to the community corrections by that fourteen point three million. That's for staffing and programs again, to bring it to the level, um, uh, historical levels that it should be. Under Charter Commission, this is, uh, championed, um, by several Commissioners to support legislation allowing Cedric County as an urban area, uh, to establish a Charter Commission specific here to Cedric County. Uh, this is a continuation, uh, as you guys know, from last year as well, that we have on our platform. So those are the top three priority issues, Commissioners. We've got supporting issues of importance, so kind of below the line, uh, but also important to the county and to our, uh, various departments. We place Health Department, um, asking for support of a statewide one point six million dollar increase in funding for aid to local funding and a permanent increase in the minimum payment allocation to local health departments. Uh, Adrian Byrne did brief you all on this, and so that's where we got that fiscal note yesterday, uh, from her ask, so we did add that back on. Under, uh, CDDO, uh, they've got to ask to develop a comprehensive five-year plan for the elimination of HCBS, IDD waiver waiting lists, to stabilize the current IDD service system and reinforce support for local expertise through the funding increases. So the fiscal note was added there, Commissioners, uh, that wasn't there yesterday, to add two point five million. So this is all funds to KADAD's, uh, budget for CDDO administration. Uh, also to increase HCBS, IDD waiver rates by seven percent, uh, which would be thirty-six point five million, uh, of all funds, uh, to restore five million in State General Fund and five hundred and sixty thousand dollars in state aid to KADAD's overall budget. And then lastly on there, there's, uh, an ask to include five million, five million in the next budget cycle to specifically address IDD waiver, uh, list offers. So that's all under CDDO, Commissioners. Under the Division and Finance and ITS, so we, uh, if you remember yesterday's, our conver, our conversation from yesterday, these are two separate items, we basically combine those to ask lawmakers to allow, uh, the Board of County Commissioners, without explicit approval by the state, so to approve this, um, to create these fund balances for both the Division of Finances, Division of Finance as well as, um, uh, Information Technology Services. As you heard from Adam, he's asking for a sales tax exemption on memberships at this point, uh, for Exploration Place. Uh, I think he is still working on that fiscal note of how much, I think the question was asked, how much in sales tax does an individual membership cost? As well as how much are we sending back to the state? So, uh, I talked to Adam yesterday, he's working on that numbers. So we'll have that for you, Commissioners, before we actually vote on that. Under Specialty Courts, it's been asked, um, expanding the eighteenth judicial court in support of a veteran as well as a mental health court. We're still looking for the fiscal note on that, we're working on that, we'll have that for you, Commissioners. The suspended driver's license reform law, uh, this is the ask of a criminal justice reform review of all minimum sentencing guidelines and, uh, and the forever lookback law. So two separate issues that I work with Commissioner Howell on, uh, for that language in particular for you. Under Senate Bill three sixty-seven, uh, there's an ask for a legislative review of judicial options concerning Senate Bill three sixty-seven. And then last but not least, broadband access and stormwater mitigation. We've kind of talked about this and Lindsay Pogerso, our CFO, she basically talked about federal funding, uh, coming down. And then also, I was talking to Jason, there's going to be some state dollars as well. So, uh, and speaking to Jason, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put this on our platform under supporting so that if money does come to Cedric County as well as the state, that we can kind of pull from both buckets hopefully, to address those needs. With that, Commissioners, we'll take any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Akeem, there probably a few, a few questions. Before we, uh, kick off the questions, could, uh, I didn't, I wanted to catch you off guard, but Jason and Jessica, welcome to the meeting. Could both of you or either of you kind of give us your overall view of this agenda? What, what's, would be highlights of possible and what's maybe impossible? And I'm a little concerned to make sure that, uh, we're not in conflict and maybe we're lockstep with the City of Wichita in the local chamber, or if there's areas that are potentially, uh, in conflict. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to prep you with this question, so I appreciate you, uh, being here and if you could kick off with a few comments.
Yeah, certainly, thank you, Mr. Chairman. You, you have a lot on this agenda, I don't know that anything stands out to me as an impossibility. Uh, I, I do think that the, the more funding requests that you make, probably the more aware you need to be that not every funding request is, is going to be realized. That's just the nature of the game. We are in a fortunate place that the state of Kansas has so much money right now. I'm a former appropriator, uh, when I was a member of the legislature, I served at a very different time when we were having to cut, cut, cut because we were in the middle of a, a financial crisis. This is a, a much different place, I don't think the state's ever had the reserves that they have right now. The, the move by both Republicans and Democrats, um, to want to focus on the food sales tax, and I know that's something that this body's going to talk in, in more detail about in terms of how it affects the county's operations. But eliminating the food sales tax will, will eat up a sizable chunk of those reserves. So I think there's, while the state has a lot of money, I, I think you're still going to see a focus by your elected leaders in Topeka, to, to be frugal with, with how they're spending money. So I would just say, uh, on, on that, that we do have a lot of funding requests and, and I think it's good that those are, are prioritized by you so that Jessica and, and myself and the rest of our team really know what we need to focus on first. Your, your other policy issues make sense, I'll say on Exploration Place, personally, that makes sense to me. But I do also want to share that, um, I've worked on some sales tax exemptions in the past. And while I'm typically a pretty successful lobbyist in Topeka, I've been unsuccessful on sales tax exemptions there. Some of the people in charge of the, um, policymaking when it comes to the tax committees are, are very anti-tax exemption. So we'll, we'll need to work hard to go make that case and probably engage the community a little bit, uh, to assist us in, in that effort. I did have one question, if it would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, and that would be on the legislative review of judicial options concerning Senate Bill three sixty-seven. Jessica and I would need to understand a little bit better what we're asking for on that.
Okay, well, our, um, our expert on this topic is Commissioner Howell, he can give you the background.
Thank you, and thank you, Chairman. I, I left that vague on purpose today because the details, I believe, we're going to generate today around noon. I have a meeting with legislators and judges and exactly, uh, exactly the points need to be made. I'm going to let them help steer that discussion. I hope to have crisp, specific details, exactly what needs to change. I have ideas in my own mind, but I'm going to, I'm going to, um, allow them essentially to answer the question better than I can. But yeah, there's, there are specific things that are missing as a consequence of that bill, that it's impacting our youth in, in Cedric County, and I could talk about this all day, but I'm going to let them answer the question. So I hope to amend this once that meeting is, uh, complete today, if that makes sense.
It does, thank you, sir.
Okay, and Commissioner Cruz had a question or a comment?
It was just, um, to take, just as a reminder, yesterday, just to take all, um, topics in exhaustion so that we're easy to understand. Yesterday, we were kind of all over the board and, and I will take responsibility for a lot of my scattered thoughts as we go through this, but I just wanted to, um, so I will also be attending the meeting today in regards to SB three sixty-seven. Looking forward to understanding more about that. That's all I have for that, but.
Yep, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Jason, I know you've been working with the city and with, uh, the chamber on a joint statement and it's normally included, uh, as part of our legislative agenda, but I have not seen that joint statement and it's not included in this legislative agenda.
I, I appreciate that question, Commissioner, because the, the chairman, uh, that was part of his question and I forgot to address that. I, I would, you haven't seen it yet because I don't think it's been finalized. It, it needs to go to your managers, city, county. But the City of Wichita did reach out to, the county did reach out to the Wichita Chamber and said, hey, let's, um, let's see if there's four or five things that all of these organizations, all three organizations could agree on and, and work together on trying to pass. The last handful of years, you've had a joint letter that the chamber, the city, the county, REAP and the partnership all signed on to. This, I think, is intended to sort of replace that joint letter by being more specific on some, on some actual policy goals. So, um, do you have that?
Good morning, Jessica, welcome to the meeting.
Good morning, thank you. So the components that we've included, um, are the aviation tax credit, which is not unfamiliar to all of you. You know, we've been working on that and we're very close last year, so we look forward to getting that across the line. We also have support for funding of a couple of technical education, um, initiatives. One has long, um, been part of our toolbox, tools, uh, Senate Bill one fifty-five, which is funding for students in high school to be able to take certain tech ed courses while they're there that the state pays for. And then in addition, this past year, the state passed something called the Promise Act, which aims to target adult learners and those recently graduated so they can also tap into valuable, high need, high demand, um, projects or learning opportunities across the state at our community and community colleges and technical colleges. So we have included, um, support for the state to continue to fund both of those programs. The other one, under that, is childcare tax credit. That was also a bill last year that was close to, to getting through and, and we're eager and hopeful that we get that passed this year as well. We know childcare is a major need for citizens across the state and certainly in Cedric County. And then lastly, of course, is support for mental health funding, including what you have on your agenda around the need for two hundred and twenty-one mental health beds.
Okay, thanks, Jessica. I didn't realize, so SB one fifty-five has to be funded every year?
Yes, um, that is an appropriation that's made every year and, and part of it is tweaked because it's based on the number of kids who are enrolled in those classes. And so every year, you'll see an amount that is allocated, but sometimes there's a gap, there's more kids enrolled than the money that was allocated for. So we have to go back and make sure that the state says, yes, there were periods of time where the state didn't fully fund that and so schools were only receiving seventy and eighty cents on the dollar for education they'd already delivered.
All right, well, my, my view, these five items, if you need that, we can check with each of the Commissioners and, and hold, but I don't think that's a, a tough letter for us to sign off on as it evolves into that.
Yeah, we feel very good about it, I think it's an exception.
Okay. Thank you, Jessica.
Chairman, I might, I might interject here and to answer Commissioner Dennis's question. What hasn't happened yet is, uh, a commissioner and generally a council person and generally someone from the chamber sit down and talk about this in a face-to-face meeting. Jason's generally there, Jeff Fleur from the partnerships there. We haven't done that yet, I, I think, a- as this is handed out to you, recognize this is a draft yet, it hasn't, you haven't adopted it yet. We haven't even had a sit-down meeting with our, with our partners to talk about it. So it's evolving, um, I was trying to remember when we did it the last couple of years. It seemed like it's right around, uh, first of December, late November, when we sat down and actually ratified this, but that has not happened yet.
Okay. Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you. One more question. One more question. I can't imagine that they would not support the suicide prevention of knife-line funding, but yet we list that as the first thing on our agenda under critical behavioral health items. We're supportive of a regional state mental health facility we've carried forward year after year and it's still one of the most important things to be able to move people out of Sedgwick County jail and into some facility that helps us. So I'm kind of amazed at the order that we put these in.
Yeah, we had a discussion yesterday, and I think Tim wants to hit the podium here and kind of talk through the logic of that order. This is still a draft. You guys can change this order around however you want, but let me have Tim explain to you kind of the logic of the priorities of the mental health component.
That one in particular is really a timing issue. There's a sense of urgency because the 988 number goes online for everyone to begin calling in July of this, of 2022, and we're still waiting for a funding stream dedicated to that. The department did just receive a grant in the amount of $540,000 that I think we approved last week, but that was for startup costs. And so we're looking for ongoing funding for the additional staff that we know that it's going to take. And so that's why that one is at the top of the list right now, because we'd like to see some action on that early in the session so that that gets approved at that, early on.
So you don't believe that they would pass that anyway?
I do believe it, but I think that the issue is there are some differences of opinion amongst the legislature, and maybe Jason can weigh in on this, about the amount that they would add as a cert tax. But I think they'll approve it, but I think the sense of urgency for us is that they get it done early enough so that everybody can feel comfortable.
And you think the least important thing we have is a regional mental health facility out of all these?
In terms of the funding priorities, where we're looking at the urgency of the 988 line and then overall the funding issues, the order of those two, the funding issues versus the hospital, would be your choice to make.
I'm just amazed at the priorities. It's not my priority, so I can tell you that.
Sure, I understand.
Commissioner Howell, do you mind if Commissioner Cruz?
That's fine.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. This is in regards to the 988. In the, the mental health coalition, we talked about also including the language that would make sure that the funding stays in that fund. So I want to, Jason, could you, or somebody, could you guys address that? What would be the appropriate way for us to advocate, not only for this fund, but to make sure that the money stays in the fund?
Yeah, a couple of things. First, let me cover Commissioner Dennis's question on, on the funding. Last year, Representative Landwehr came forward with a proposal, and I think it was a, at one point, it was going to be a 50 cent addition on your telephone bill. And they kind of negotiated that down to 25 cents. Initially, the, the cellphone carriers came in with, with pretty big resistance to this. And as I recall, that really was kind of negotiated, when it was negotiated down to 25 cents, I think that we only had one carrier that kind of remained opposed. And then we ran out of time and funding wasn't necessary this year, obviously, or last year, it obviously is this year. So I think kind of to Tim's point, you're going to see this come back pretty quickly. To your question, that's the age-old concern that we always have with funding in the Kansas legislature. You know, starting with the point that one legislature can't bind another legislature, just like this commission can't bind a future commission. You can try to insert language that really emphasizes that, but every appropriations act is a new law every single year. And so it is really, really difficult to create anything in law that stops sweeps. I think that's probably what you're concerned about. Or that, or that a legislature comes in in the future and says, well, you know, this 988 is related to suicide, that's related to mental health, therefore that's related to this, and we're now going to spend some of this money over here, and it turns out it doesn't have anything to do with suicide prevention or behavioral health, and I'm not giving you the answer that you want. The unfortunate answer is it's nearly impossible to prevent that from happening. I'll say finally, the, probably the best way to prevent that from happening is to be vigilant and to continue to lobby hard every year to make sure that that money's spent in the way that you want it to be spent.
Sure, no, I appreciate you just giving me the real rail. That's what I want. So, Tim, if we didn't have this, these funds, I think why it's so important is because as the, the entity that will be answering these calls, what will it cost us if it's not funded?
I'm going to do some math in my head right now.
Please do.
But we're probably talking about $300,000 to $400,000 a year. And that's, I'm sure that's short. It's probably double that to staff at 24 hours a day, seven days a week with additional staff. Somewhere between a half million dollars and $700,000 would be my guess.
And that would, that would fall on us if this funding didn't come through. So I think that's why it's, it is pretty important. The additional thing, this is 25 cents per line, right?
Correct.
So per phone, per line, okay.
But that's subject to change.
Okay.
Through the legislative process, but that's roughly where they were when we left last year.
All right. So would it be your suggestion to keep that language out that we want it kept in the fund? Or does that add a, add a kink in it? What's your professional opinion on that?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it, I don't think it hurts to say you want that funding protected. Without getting into too much detail, I will say that last year, when that bill initially looked at 50 cents per line, there, there were discussions about, okay, that might provide more than it costs to just necessarily man those phone lines? And does that create an opportunity to do more in terms of funding for behavioral health issues? So there could be a double-edged sword there, if you will, on saying that you want to restrict Because you certainly want to make sure that, that the 988 operations are funded. But if you, if it turned out that you had extra money sitting there, and this is a policy decision for this body to make, if, if it turned out that there was extra money sitting there beyond what it took to fund those 988 operations, at the end of the day, would you be okay with those being spent on other behavioral health benefits? And again, I think that's a policy decision for this body.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. I was going to ask some questions about this, but you've answered a lot of my questions. But let me just make a point here that Kansas is right now the sixth highest in the nation on self, on telephone taxes. We're sixth highest, we're right behind, right behind New York. I suppose it's good we're going to see a sales tax cut on food because we'll need that money to pay our cellphone bill. I don't understand the thoughts behind shifting tax burden. I don't, ultimately, that doesn't help anybody if we simply just cut taxes one place and add taxes another place. I don't know how that makes any sense, but obviously 988 needs to be, needs to be funded and it's, it's obviously a priority. I guess I would look to us first to find out whether we even need this money to, to stand this up. I think that we would, I would think this is a priority. This ought to, this ought to be ahead of a lot of other things we do. So I don't know that we absolutely need a tax increase to fund this, but reflecting on a couple of things you said, Mr. Chairman and commissioners, I would like to see us simply make a very small comment on our platform that says we support the joint statement issued by whoever's going to issue this. Other words, let them, let them use the real estate on their paper to lay out the details that was handed out to us, these issues, say we support this, without elaborating on what's on here. Other words, just make a statement that says we support this and on your paper, say we have the support of Sedgwick County government or Sedgwick County Commission. Other words, I think that's, that's the best way to do this. I don't know, we need to actually add the details on our platform. Yes, or go ahead.
Yeah, I would just, I appreciate you bringing that point up. You haven't, when I alluded to the joint letter that you've done in the past, you haven't put those on your agenda necessarily in the past. So there's just been a letter that went out that was signed by the chairman, by the mayor, by Flewer, et cetera. This approach wouldn't change that. So I do think that's an important, important point. You don't necessarily need to list those issues that Jessica shared the details on because there's, the three organizations together are going to produce a palm card with the chamber logo, the county logo, the city logo, and say, you know, these are joint issues that we all agree upon. And then the lobbyists for your organization, the chamber and the city, will all share those with legislators in Topeka.
Well, I for one am happy with the way this is written. I think it's good language and I would, if nothing else today, I think we should at least approve this and allow you guys to go forward with your printing to get that out. But to me, that makes sense. And if we want to reference this on our own platform, simply say there was a letter, you know, that represents a joint statement. If we want to say that at all, I think that's fine for us to say that, but in terms of any details, I don't need to add those details on our own written platforms, if that makes sense.
I agree.
The last communication I had with city manager and with Mr. Flewer is we would have a meeting. If the commission's comfortable with this today, though, we could surely vote for it and then our, our commission, I don't know how you feel about that, Jason, before we sat down with partners. I think it's mature enough on the chamber side. I'm not sure about the city side, but if the commission is comfortable, are you okay with what?
I am, and if the city were to come back and change something, you could always bring it back before the commission for an amendment.
Well, just to expedite this, before we are done with this agenda item today, I think I would be glad to make a motion to adopt this as written unless someone has an objection to that. But it would help you guys move forward and lean forward to get this out as quickly as possible. I think, again, timing at this time of year is very important. And I do, by the way, Senate Bill 155, just wanted to share, I was on House Education when that came up initially, and I actually have language that was adopted by the, by the legislature, and there's language in there that I am very fond of. I love that Senate Bill 155 is a great thing for this community. I've talked to numerous business owners last night, and you know, Jerry Mahill at the 42nd Economic Outlet Conference, he talked about the shortage of labor, skilled labor. And the manufacturers I talked with last night, every one of them is struggling with trying to find someone and having to provide training to get them where they're useful in their own thing. So this is a huge part, I think, of maybe in our local economy forward, we have to have a way to do this. And rather than each, each independent business doing this on their own, again, that's fine if they want to do that, but I think a coordinated effort that's a little bit more coordinated between the different entities, including some, some help from the state, would be very, very timely right now. So that's a very important part of this. I do want to ask you, Jason, there was a couple, I'm not sure if it was a week or two, or a week or two ago, we talked about the food sales tax issue. I've not seen the language, I've not seen any clarification, but I do know that Brenda Landwehr and Tom Sawyer, state representatives, did respond to an Eagle story that said this has zero impact on local sales tax. Can you confirm that, whether or not this, a sales tax exemption on food sales, does that impact, does the county still levy one cent sales tax on those food items or is that part of, how is that impacted by this policy?
You're correct that there's not been any formal legislation brought forth, which makes it somewhat difficult to, to answer questions because we're, we're speculating on what those bills may look like. It's my understanding that the local sales tax that is levied here does apply to food. It is possible that the legislature could come out and say, we're going to eliminate the state sales tax on food, but locals could continue to charge. Now mechanically, I think that would be very difficult for your, your businesses to comply with. I'm not sure if that's even possible. I don't know how that would work. That when I purchase something at the grocery store, it's programmed to say, okay, no sales tax, but charge, you know, 1%, county. I'm, I'm, I just don't know that you can do that.
Let me just go after then, though. So again, I think, I think this needs to be clarified. We need our gubernatorial candidates to clarify their policy and as soon as that bill is written, we need to know. I do know that if it does include a, an exemption on local sales tax levy on food, that that's north of $10 million to Sedgwick County. Now, we split that up, so again, part of that goes to Wichita, part of that goes to Sedgwick County government, part of that goes to other cities. It's not, not entirely hit on Sedgwick County itself, you know, specifically, but we're talking overall about, you know, north of $10 million hit to local revenue that's shared by, by all these local cities. Again, I don't know that I mind the discussion, but I feel like, again, we are asking for more spending and moving tax policy from one thing and shifting it to another. It's not like we're taking money out of one pocket and putting it in the other. It doesn't really make sense to me that we would have tax increases one place and tax cuts another. I don't know, I don't know how that helps anybody. But anyway, I think we need to have some clarification exactly what this, what this does, and so as our lobbyists, please help us get that information. And I don't want to be presumptive. I don't think anybody, anybody really knows right now. And so it's, you know, I love our legislators, I love each one of them, but I don't think that they have the answers. I don't think they have the actual details to know exactly what's been proposed yet because I don't think anybody does. So, all right. I do agree, we ask for too many things for, that are funded, you know, funding requests, it does water down attention on the ones that we feel are the highest priorities. I think that's, again, I see the very long list of spending requests on behalf of the state. I'm a little concerned about, Commissioner Dennis mentioned priorities, which one's first on the list? You can look at it that way. I just see there's so many things that require funding on here. I don't know that we're going to get much attention on any of these because I think they're, they are competing with each other on the paper. So I'm a little concerned about that. If you want to elaborate, you did say this earlier, I just want to say, I guess I agree with your comments. If you want to make any other comments back based on what I just said, that'd be great as well, but. I don't know if this is on here or not, but yesterday we talked about EMS and com care and tuition reimbursement and expediting certifications. Is that that bullet bottom, second from the bottom on page one? Is that what that's supposed to mean? Because I don't see where that's on here.
When we had staff discussion after the, after the staff meeting yesterday with the commission, we feel the EMS discussion has not even been vetted with our own EMS staff yet, so we thought we'd step back on that, talk with our EMS staff about their thoughts on any type of change to their licensing protocol and then at least come forward with something unified from, from them. With com care, Tim, can you help me out on our discussion on the licensing of the social
Again, in an effort to shorten the document, we kind of rolled those two issues to tuition reimbursement, loan forgiveness, and expedited licensing all into one bullet point. But those are the three issues that we're really hoping to, any one of those things getting approved this year would be helpful, so we kind of rolled those all together. We're looking, you know, there's a critical workforce issue across the state in behavioral health. We need the state to help us with that. So that's kind of the language that we're using there.
Commissioner? That is the second bullet.
Oh, that is the second, okay. That's what I say. So that, as the way it's currently written, it's not describing that thought very well to me, so I'm not sure we can just maybe add a word or two. I'm not sure, or I don't want to lengthen it too much, but I do think that it's not very clear what this is talking about as it's currently worded. Other than that, I think this is improvement over yesterday, and I think we ought to continue to work at this, but I, overall, I think it's, it's better than it was yesterday. Thank you for the work, Akeem, and thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I think Commissioner Cruz is next.
Thank you. Back to joint statements, if I could. We, so when it comes to mental health, the mental health coalition, as other agencies around the state, you know, we're all kind of thinking along the same lines when it comes to a regional mental health facility here. What is your recommendation as far as like a mental health joint statement between city, county, mental health coalition, other agencies? They're slipping my mind right now, but how do you, how do you think we should handle that?
So there was a decent amount of back and forth, Commissioner, with the groups that we've described on exactly how to address that. The county's been very specific the last few years on its agenda, just being very clear, we want a state-owned and operated hospital in Sedgwick County. hospital in Sedgwick County. The Chamber, the last few years, has tried to be supportive of that without being quite so direct, although I believe this year their legislative agenda is more to the point on that issue. The city, it seemed like there was maybe some hesitancy for whatever reason, and I'm not sure. But, there was some hesitancy to ask specifically for that. And again, I'm not exactly sure why. So, ultimately, Commissioner, what we landed on was the statement that we support the Mental Health Modernization Task Force recommendation for the funding of an additional 221 beds over five years, knowing that the addition of those 221 beds would allow for some funding for beds in Sedgwick County.
What's the current number of beds? I thought, I thought that was the current number of beds. We're asking for 50 additional, so that...
221 statewide.
What's the current, 221 statewide is the current number of beds?
No, 220, needed. 221 is the addition to be added over five years. If we were able to get the 221 additional statewide over five years, that would allow for the 50 here.
Okay. Now, the other thing, Tim, and I'm looking at you, was the senior nursing facilities. So, there's 10 mental health nursing facilities. The closest one to here is Peabody. And when we talked to Robin Chadwick about, you know, the number of seniors who have mental illness, the capacity for that isn't enough here. So, I wonder how many of those beds, so, Tim, help me with this conversation.
Those beds are actually housed in nursing facilities. So, the operation of a hospital is different than the operation of a nursing facility.
I'm aware of that. But, the correlation between number, would any of those seniors ever go to a hospital? Could they be treated in a nursing facility if the capacity was greater there and not take up the beds? Because the conversation, according to the sheriff and the rest of the group, 50 really isn't even going to be enough. And so, how do we ensure that if we could subpopulation people and they're cared for in the appropriate setting? Do you understand my question?
I do. The process to get people in and out of the NFMH is long and complex. And there's not always a correlation between hospital and, some folks go from the community into an NFMH. Treatment occurs, and then they're able to release, and they never touch the hospital system. Other folks do go community, hospital, NFMH. Rarely do people go from NFMH to a hospital, but that occurs occasionally as well. The goal is always to treat people in the community. But, we've got those higher levels of care for folks that need that level of care.
Okay. So, I don't want to complicate the situation. Obviously, this is already a complicated subject matter. But, I think that's something that we should look into in, maybe next year, in regards to handling our senior population because there's clearly a need when you have a gentleman who's sitting in the hospital for how many days? I mean, whoa, what did she say? That her specific example she gave was a senior who they couldn't, they sat in the hospital for weeks.
Yeah, a number of weeks.
And that would free up a bed for somebody else if they had the appropriate place to go. So, I won't, I won't belabor that. But, I think that's something that we could consider.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Real quickly, I do support the joint statement. It seems like in the past, we put something down on our palm card, though, that said that we support the joint statement. Is that not true?
Yeah, that's correct, Commissioner. Actually, and this is, kind of gives me the opportunity to highlight my staff for just a second. We've got Robin Furtner. She's our new senior graphic designer. And this is only her third day. And in her third day, she's actually already kind of created a design. So, you are correct, Commissioner, that at the bottom. But, we did highlight three of the issues from before. However, as Jason mentioned, this list is a little bit more exhaustive. So, I don't think that there's going to be room on here. However, I think somewhere on this platform card, this is just kind of a example. This language, obviously, is just kind of designer talk. Robin could probably read it for us. But, it's just a placeholder, basically. So, I think at the bottom, what we can do, Commissioner, is we can put something down here, amend this, and then kind of give you something where we can say that we support the joint platform. So, we can definitely do that. That's easy.
And I'm very happy that they put mental health funding on their agenda. And again, it's a regional concept that we're looking at. We only need 50 beds here. I've never heard the sheriff say that we needed more than 50 beds here. It seems like last year we were like 35 beds, as I recall. But, I think that that's the approach that the sheriff wants to go, is that we don't want to be the only one. We want them spread out across the state so that there, keep the folks that can provide direct support from the family and so forth to the people that go into those facilities. So, I'm still a very strong supporter of regional mental health facility. The second thing, changing gears a little bit, Commissioner Howell brought up the sales tax. And then Jason responded that it might be a little difficult for the businesses. I think it is going to be difficult for the businesses. If you take a look at somebody like Dylan's, you walk in there, there's thousands of items that probably will not qualify as food. And I think that it's probably geared towards food rather than the mops and the toilet paper and cat food and everything else that you can buy in that facility. So, they're going to have to have quite a computer set up in order to be able to say, as you start ringing up all these items, which items are sales tax exempt and which ones are going to have to pay sales tax. Am I wrong?
No, I don't think you're wrong. And I, I'm no expert in this area. I would imagine that Dylan's, Walmart, stores like that, will probably figure it out. I think where it gets really difficult is that small convenience store that sells items that are food-related and sells items that are not. That POS system that that retailer has is a lot less sophisticated than what the larger retailers have. And I think that's where the difficulty would really start to come in.
I guess my only point in bringing that up is that, as we're talking about the one cent sales tax, which we're more interested in right now, if they're able to differentiate all of these other items, I think that it wouldn't be difficult to differentiate that same thing on the one cent sales tax that is countywide.
Yeah. Again, I think maybe depending on the type of point-of-sale system that that retailer has.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So, did I hear that there's a motion to Commissioner Howell and Dennis? Is there a formal motion to adopt, or proposal to adopt the joint legislative agenda letter as presented?
I make a motion to adopt the joint statement as presented.
I'll second it based on what it doesn't change.
Right, exactly. Okay. Any other comments on that? I don't see any. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Okay, we got that one done. Commissioners, we have, don't forget, we have some executive sessions. We got a potential off-agenda item, but we can continue to plow through this. Then, being self-aware that 11:30 is a hard drop for a couple of commissioners. So, we can continue on on this.
If it's your will. Chairman, I think the ask was that we take it line by line.
Okay.
Let me, let me interject on that. Chairman, I think we had talked about this a little bit at staff yesterday. On November 30, we have a staff meeting. That's a Tuesday. We could take this back, massage it, and then bring it back to you on the 1st of December for vote. It might be a little bit more prudent and give us a chance to kind of, after what we've heard today, go in. And I'd also like to consult with Jason on this as well, to maybe streamline this a little bit more and help us with prioritizations. This is your document. So, if we're not happy with prioritizations, you'll have at least two more shots to modify and change that before, while you vote on it. So, I would ask for a little bit more time to work on this and bring it back to a staff meeting on November 30.
Okay. Well, and then that would allow for Commissioner Howell and Cruz to bring clarity on that SB 367, because we're not, that's not ready for primetime. Okay. Well, if it's all right with the commission, then we, we've heard what we need to hear and we'll kind of continue on.
Receive and file.
So, make a motion then to receive and file as of today.
Second.
Motion in a second, receive and file. No other comments? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thanks, Jason and Jessica. Appreciate you being here. And your help is greatly appreciated and your insight is very valued. So, thank you. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Item C, Report of the Bids and Contracts Regular Meeting on November 10, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, and the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts on November 10 results in just one item for your consideration. This item is the auditing services for Finance Department, and the recommendation is to accept the proposal from BKD CPAs and advisors at the quoted price and rates listed. And this will cover the fiscal years ending December 31, 2021 through December 31, 2025. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval. Okay. Any questions on the presentation from Joe? I don't see any. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other questions? Being none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners. You bet. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. Tom Stoles, County Manager's Office, recommend approval of consent items D through O. We call special attention to item E, which is routine business, but it's a grant renewal application in the amount of $1,305,293 for funding for transit in the county. It's a significant win for our citizens in the county. So, I just wanted to point that out. But, ask for your approval of all these consent items.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification and emphasis on item E. So, I'll make a motion to approve consent items D through O. Okay, Commissioner Cruz?
I'll second that. But, I'd like to call to attention item G. We had talked just briefly about the amount of money that is being transferred for these indigent defense service and jury fees. So, the transfer is $428,460 to the district court's operating budget. I just want to call that out because I think this goes into the discussion around criminal justice reform and how much money we actually are spending on a lot of these services. And getting people out of the system is a certain priority. And I think the initiatives that we've been working on will hopefully reduce these costs in the future. I was hoping to really talk about it today with our DA and, but we weren't able to do that. So, that's okay. But, I'd like to call attention to item G.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion in a second for consent item approval, items D through O. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
I think we covered legislative issues. And we do have, well, committee reports, but we also, we have a fire agenda. So, we need to, let's go for, let's recess from this meeting, go to the fire agenda of fire district one. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
President.
Commissioner Howell?
President.
Commissioner Cruz?
President.
Chairman Meitzner?
President. Mr. Clerk, first item, please.
Public agenda.
Anybody from the public want to address the commission on the fire district one? I don't see any. So, we will close the public agenda. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, request approval, Tom Stoles again, I'm sorry, for the record, request approval of consent items A and B on the fire agenda.
Okay. Commissioners, you have consent items A and B for the fire agenda in front of you. Is any questions? I don't see any. So, I will make a motion to approve items A and B on the consent agenda as proposed. Motion in a second. No other questions or comments? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Next item, please. Is there any other items that come before the commission on, as for the fire district? And I don't see any. So, we will adjourn the fire district and will return to the, to the Board of County Commission meeting. Okay. At this time, I'd like to make a motion for a, make a motion for an off-agenda item relating to, related to setting a date for the redistricting, a deadline date for redistricting. So, I'll make a motion that we take an off-agenda item.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other questions? Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Commissioners, thank you for this off-agenda item. After the discussion recently, we, and brought to light the, I'll call it the 180-day timeframe. And I'd like to consider a proposal for a deadline. But, first, can you please clarify for us, Mr. Fessinger or Mr. Papoun, about this issue related to a deadline?
Sure, Commissioners. Good morning. Mike Fessinger, Assistant County Counselor. Yesterday, Commissioner Howell brought up a point that there is a 180-day deadline on, for candidates who wish to file for a local office based upon petition. He is correct about that requirement. Kansas law requires that, well, basically says that once the first signature is obtained on a petition, that petition becomes invalid if that first signature is more than 180 days old. So, if there's anything on that petition that's more than six months old, the petition becomes invalid. So, that leads to a rubric where, you know, candidates will often obtain that first signature six months before the filing deadline to ensure that all signatures on that petition are valid and that there's no chance that the petition becomes invalid. Now, that doesn't mean that they have to start six months before. They could start five months before or four months before. But, if there's anything on that petition that's more than 180 days old, that petition becomes invalid. So, that's the rule on that.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification on that. We can, we can have some questions or discussion. Or, my thought is that the 180 days ends up being like December 1. And I think...
Approximately, yeah. That's correct.
Based on, based on COVID and based on the fact that the census got to us a little, the census data got to us quite late in this process, on this 10-year census. But, so, I'm hoping that we will not have a problem with a 30-day window. So, my thought was a proposal that we put a deadline for redistricting on our January 5 meeting. I'm not sure how. I didn't have a chance to vet this with a lot of the commissioners. So, I'm just trying to help establish a deadline so we're in compliance with Kansas law.
Well, what I can tell you is that under that proposed framework, that would very likely not present any significant legal risk to the county. I discussed this issue with counsel for Secretary Schwab's office. And, you know, there have been instances in the past where other counties redistricted so late that nobody had the opportunity to file by petition. Of course, they have that alternative of just paying the fee and filing that way.
Right.
There was, there was no lawsuits or anything related that stemmed from that instance in the past, which would have been a far shorter timeline than what you're proposing. But, that date that you've laid out there would work, in my opinion.
Okay. So, I'll make that motion. But, Commissioner Howell?
Chairman, just for clarification, did you say December 5?
January 5.
January 5.
First meeting in January.
January the 5th. Okay.
And I know, I realize that, I think our last meeting is December 15 of the year. And so, there was, and then that's kind of dead time between, over the holidays. But, not to say that, when we went through COVID, we had a lot of time that we'd never had dead time. So...
I, I think January 5 certainly works. I, I would prefer to do it December 15, only because I think it gives them, gives people just a little bit more time. That still gives us an entire month to work out our differences and find three votes. I, I don't know, we can, I don't know why we couldn't do it December 15, if that seems reasonable that we would have that much, we'd be able to, to get this done by that timeframe, but someone keeps, you know, we keep hearing words about disenfranchisement, you know, to file for these seats is roughly $1,000 unless you do by petition, and by petition, it's just hard work, but you can file for these seats by knocking doors and getting petition signatures, and to me, it's, it's an issue of disenfranchisement on opportunity for people who, who don't have $1,000, it gives them an opportunity. So once again, to, to, to remove arbitrarily some time out of that 180 days, in my opinion, is not fair. I would rather lean forward and try to get this done earlier if possible, so I would prefer to see December 15. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, well, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't see that, we, we have no meeting between December the 15th and January the 5th, so I don't know what additional information or items that, that would happen in Sedgwick County to make a big difference by the January 5th, so I, I don't know why that we couldn't set December 15.
Okay, well, if you want to make a motion, I, I just wanted, realizing this Kansas law impact, I, I think it's prudent on the commission to, to continue to get all the feedback we can and from the public and from your, in your own district, and, but we do need to set a deadline and make a decision, so Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. So you, you made a motion for January the 5th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to second that motion. I am concerned that we have, we had a town hall, we heard feedback, we had a request for a bipartisan group like the League of Women Voters to examine these, these maps. We've since had another request in our inboxes this morning, and I, I'd like to propose, after the current motion on the table, to have a bipartisan group look these over and come back with a recommendation on said date that we agree to. I don't know if you want to take this motion. I think it's important for us to understand that a lot of these maps affect only a small percentage of a district, which is mine, and District Four is heavily, has, has a large minority population, and most of these maps will split those groups. For example, Plan One would reduce the power of African-Americans to exercise their right to vote, to elect commissioners. Instead of being 13% of voters in, in one district, District Four, they would be spread between districts and their voting strength in District Four would be reduced by almost half to 7%. I can go on and analysis and, and talk about all the rest of these that we all received this morning. I think it's important for us to really understand how this affects the entire community as a whole.
Okay, Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I do have a question with 180 days, so if people want to file by petition and we haven't redistrict yet, can they still collect signatures and focus on the areas that most likely won't be, they could start there and, and areas that won't be changed?
Yes, they can begin collecting signatures, and additionally, if they happen to collect the signature of somebody who is removed from their district and placed into another district, that won't invalidate the petition. Our election commissioner instead will just lift that signature off and adjust the count accordingly.
Okay, so with that being the case, I do think we should wait until January. I think that's a good middle ground, and I agree, since everything was a little bit delayed with the census and because of COVID, that that just makes sense that, you know, it is going to take just a little bit longer than maybe we would have wanted it to originally. And I also agree with the nonpartisan group looking at this and bringing that, their recommendations to us. I think it kind of removes a lot of the emotion that's from this side of things, if we can hear another group that's taken this into consideration, and, and I do know that we don't have a meeting between the 15th of December and January 5, but that doesn't mean that we can't continue working these things separately, or, you know, the group can work on whatever it is, however they go about doing that, so I don't know how that would get started or the process for something like that, but I do think that would be good to look at, just so we can have another opinion of a group that's not necessarily us.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that raises some questions. I've heard someone, a couple people use the words "nonpartisan" a couple times. Are we suggesting that the people in this review group are unaffiliated voters? Or are we talking about bipartisan? Which group are we talking about? How many people? Who's going to select them? What's the process? How does someone get on this committee? Are they appointed by Commissioners? I have a lot of questions about that. Let me say this, you know, in, in a non-formal fashion, I've had numerous meetings in the community on redistricting. One of those was by my cab board, and I intentionally did my best to make sure I had diversity and everything I could think of, diversity on that board, and they did, they did attend Monday night and they did make their comments. I did also ask at that meeting regarding, apparently the, the issue of race has, has been, has been raised, and again, I don't have access to that data. People might be surprised by that, but again, if we're going to, if we're going to do this based on race, then I guess I need to have access to the data. Right now, I don't know which maps are displaying groups and which ones aren't, I couldn't tell you. I have no idea. So to me, I've not put much thought into the issue of race, I've just been thinking about population and I've been thinking about geographic size. To me, that's an issue, as well as affluence and, and wealth, to me, that's an issue, but that's just, you know, the number one thing, of course, is population, and if, if we're going to have to consider race in this, then I guess I need to have access to that data and need to know which maps actually deal, how they, how they managed racial populations. I don't know right now how that data is. I did ask for that Monday, I don't think I've received it yet that I know of.
Okay.
So, so Chairman, I just want, I just want to say, if we're going to have to have a quote-unquote "nonpartisan" group, to me, that's very complicated to, to do that, some kind of official form, some kind of official form.
That would be a separate off-agenda item of whatever, right now, there's a motion in a second to approve January 5, but Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I would have to say it's a, it would be a bipartisan, because I don't know that we would find a lot of unaffiliated people, so I would, I, I think I said bipartisan earlier. We did receive, it's, it's really communities of interest, that's the legal term around the considerations that we must look at when redistricting, is that correct?
Yeah, you may consider communities of interest, that's one of the factors that staff relied upon. You may consider race if you wish, and, and we can provide you with that data at your instruction, and I apologize, Commissioner, if we've not gotten that to you, and I, I was perhaps unaware of your official ask for that, but we can provide that if you wish.
So that's, I, I think that's important for us to understand those communities of interest, and, you know, a lot of these plans shift really, I mean, it, it affects the Riverside area, which Riverside, when you divide those communities of interest, that, that really kind of threatens the collaborative bipartisan makeup of future commissions. Riverside also is very, I mean, there's a, it's a tri-neighborhood area between Midtown, Riverside, and, oh my gosh, it's escaping me right now.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, the motion was for just trying to get a deadline for January 5, it wasn't to discuss the whole redistricting process. I think you should vote on that, and then if the commission wants to take up another off-agenda item on another topic, you can do that, but again, we've got a couple of executive sessions that really need to get in, get in today.
Thank you for clarifying, so we need to have a vote on the motion. It is a different topic that we're discussing. Commissioner Howell, did you?
Just, thank you, Chairman, just a, a, a clarification, I guess, is, you know, we're talking about adding three weeks to this process, so going from, right now, if you subtract out the week of Thanksgiving, we would have three weeks, with Thanksgiving, four weeks. The change would be three more weeks, but that's also including Christmas and New Year's stuff, so we're talking early about two effective weeks. It may not seem substantial, but I guess I'm curious why, why this nonpartisan, I should say bipartisan, group, why can't they get this done in the next four weeks? Why, what, it seems like plenty of time to me for them to get together and have a discussion.
Okay, Commissioner Howell, we can have a different off, okay, this is, there was a motion in a second for a deadline of January 5, and I do not have a, Commissioner Dennis?
Okay, so there is a motion in a second, so I'll make a substitute motion that we set the deadline for December 15.
Second.
Okay, substitute motion for a deadline to December 15. Any other comments? Being none, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez. Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
No.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. We'll set the deadline no later than December 15. Okay, Mr. Clerk, any other, next item?
I'd, I'd like to make a motion for an off-agenda item for discussion of a bipartisan group that would examine these maps.
Okay. There's a motion in a second for an off-agenda item related to bipartisan maps. Mr. Clerk, make, please call the roll. Wait, Commissioner Howell had a question.
Discussion on the motion, I, I guess I'd like to know, is this going to be a formal group or an informal group?
What, I'm, I don't understand.
Formal means we create it and they have minutes, agendas, they have appointments, they, they take the oath of office and on it goes. Uninformal means they can meet as many times as they want to, any way they want to, and I think they can do that now without this motion, and I would encourage it, thank you.
I'd like to make it a formal group.
So that means it'd be an open meetings?
Mr. Chairman, if, if I could again, I think the motion here is just to, whether you want to take this up as an off-agenda item, once you agree to do that, then I'm sure Commissioner Cruz can explain what she's wanting to do and you can have the discussion that Commissioner Howell wants to have, but.
Okay, there's a motion in a second for an off-agenda item related to this. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Okay, Commissioner Cruz, or do you want to wait for questions?
I, I would like to create a bipartisan group like the League of Women Voters to examine these maps, to effectively understand how the next 10 years will be impacted with each plan and how neighborhoods and communities of interest, which is required by law for us to consider when redrawing these boundaries.
Okay. Mr. Howell, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, Chairman, I just think it's extremely complicated. To, to formalize this, we would require identifying the appropriate people to serve, publishing agendas, public comment, oath of office, how many people, which group, I think it's extremely complicated, and I don't know that we would prohibit anybody in the community from actually issuing opinions on every map. I welcome those comments, I want to be very inclusive. The cab boards have already weighed in, I, I think to have numerous conversations in the community and, and encourage inclusive access to every, to all the policymakers here is appropriate, but if you limit this down to a group that's formalized, to me, that it, it actually, in my opinion, disenfranchises those that are not part of that group. I don't know that this is necessary. Extremely complicated and we have a short timeframe to get this done, so I don't, I don't think this makes sense to me. I would encourage the League of Women Voters to please get together and, and discuss this and issue their opinions and thoughts, but it doesn't require formal action by this board to make that happen. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I don't have a problem with having a, a separate group, I, what I don't know is, I think we need a suspense for that report coming back prior to December the 15th, and I think we need some more definition in the motion on who's going to serve on this, how are we going to select them? Right now, it's just kind of an open-ended motion, and we're not giving the staff any direction of what we want out of this group, so the way the motion is written right, is made right now, I don't know that I can support it, but I, I could support a separate group. It's just, I think we need more definition to give to the staff and how that the report would come back to us, when it would come back to us, and so forth, so if you could expand on the motion, I think I could support it, but I can't the way it is right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz?
I would like to expand on my motion. I would like to create, I would like to have created a 15-member bipartisan group to be selected. Kind of making sausage from the bench here on this. A 15-member board, and I'd like the League of Women Voters to advise, because they are a bipartisan group as to who they feel would be best to serve on this board. We can have it created by December 3, they would come back to us December 10, they would have to meet that week, and they would present the 15th. I mean, I don't know why you guys are rushing this so fast, I don't understand what the rush is. If, if, if the reason why we are rushing this is because people need to have 180 days, well, our councilor has already told us that they could start collecting petitions now, so I'm not sure why it's, we're in such a hurry to do this, and I think it's, I don't understand why we're in such a hurry to, to rush this through. So what, what kind of questions do you need clarified?
So the League of Women Voters, under your proposal, would be the sole group that picks the 15 members?
Each Commissioner, we could say, five members could be selected from the county commission, so we would each have a person represented on this board, and then we could have the League of Women Voters add the additional 10. They are a group of women who do this all the time, they are very nonpartisan in nature. I think we've all had experience with how they conduct business, I think that they would be the most appropriate group to help understand how these maps will impact the community for the next 10 years. Could we agree to that?
Well, it's, it, just going to, we have to understand your motion.
Each Commissioner would receive a seat at the table, each Commissioner would receive an appointment for this board, the remaining 10 would be League of Women Voter appointees.
They would meet on December 3 or before and decide by December 10, and they would present to the commission what they would recommend.
On the 15th.
On the 15th, and would they have, following along Commissioner Howell's line of questioning, would they have the flexibility to have a GIS person there to make additional maps? Yes or no?
I think it's important for them to, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So they could have additional maps, so staff would have to be available and GIS would have to be available? I mean, I'm just, I'm helping clarify, okay? Is all, I'm not trying to argue, I'm trying to clarify.
Sure.
And my, my final question, and it looks, looks like there's others, so their recommendation, your, their recommendation to the commission on the 15th would be a recommendation, it wouldn't be a formal decision? We would still make the ultimate decision?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Couple of questions here, don't know who came first, Commissioner Howell, I think.
Just a couple of quick questions, League of Women, League of Women Voters, are there men represented on that committee?
There can certainly be men on the committee.
So are, are the members of the League of Women Voters, are they, are they making, they're making the appointments, could be anybody in the community?
Yes.
They could be anybody in the, they don't have to be a member of the League of Women Voters?
The, the directive is for the League of Women Voters to pick the other 10, whether they are actual members of the League of Women Voters or community members, they would be. be the one to pick.
Any, is there any thought to where they live, or any thought to their racial demographic, or anything else besides just the fact that they get to pick them? I have, I have a large population of Asian residents in my district, and I would like to make sure that they're represented as well. And I also, I also have pockets of people who are less affluent. I'd like to make sure that there's representation from that, from those groups as well. And I, I just think, again, I don't know how you do this quickly, but if they're going to do it, I'm going to be very, I'm going to watch the process closely to make sure that this is done in a way that we can trust the results, that they make a recommendation back. It needs to be done very, very well. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Well, I think we kind of answered this already, but I wanted to ask about staff involvement and how we would have staff there, or how many staff, or what staff members should be a part of this. I guess that's the question I would have about that.
Mr. Manager, would you be willing to have staff like we have at our cab boards, be willing to staff it with two members for the 3rd and the 10th? We would have to have meeting minutes collected. What kind of staff time do you think that it would be involved?
I'm thinking through this as you're talking. We would want a GIS, or Mr. Joseph would have to be there. I think Mr. Fessinger as legal counsel would be appropriate, probably a couple of interns to manage minutes and logistics. Would prefer to have the meeting in a room where Jack has access to our system and he can then work on the fly with mapping. And also in an area where we could display the current 10 maps, which the commission is considering. We'd want to, we could pull it off. We'd like to do it here, maybe even in this room. But we'll staff it if the commission wills it so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Commissioner Cruz, one clarifying question. When did you say that it was, the report was going to come back to the commission?
The 10th.
It'd be back to the commission on the 10th. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that it's in time that we could analyze it well before the, okay, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Papun, so I think I heard that this would be a non-binding recommendation that we would be receiving on the 10th. But because this is a committee appointed by the commission, A, it's an open meeting, I assume?
Oh, yeah. Any committee that you appoint officially as a board would have to conduct open meetings.
And B, does the commission need to approve the 15 members? Or can they just be, the League of Women just say, we're putting these regardless of commission approval?
I think it would probably behoove the commission, if we had an opportunity to draw up some kind of a resolution creating this non, this redistricting committee. And I think we have a lot of the information from what we're hearing from the discussion, but there are probably some details as keep coming out that we would probably want to add to that resolution and bring back to this committee, or this commission in a special meeting or the meeting next Wednesday. But I think you would want to create this committee and the various obligations of committee members, the League of Women Voters and such by resolution. So that would be my recommendation.
Okay. All right. So, Mr. Clerk, I don't know what you've got written down for a motion. The details of this motion are...
So that, can I?
Please.
Would you like me to clarify?
Sure.
So we would be creating a bipartisan group, a 15-member board, five members to be selected by commissioners, 10 members to be selected by the League of Women Voters. If we could add further clarification, perhaps we could have this resolution would come to us the 1st of December. That would be the next opportunity. Is that correct, Mr. Papun?
We could certainly have it by then, Commissioner Cruz, or we could have it at a special meeting prior to that, if you, if the board desires.
Okay. Their first meeting would be the 3rd or whenever they can meet. They would bring their recommendation back to us the 10th.
Okay. So the resolution would come to us for approval on December 1st with the committee members?
Yes, and I think this commission is probably going to have to look at the resolution that you already have, appointing board members. You know, we could, right now, we go through a fairly formal process of selecting members, so we're going to have to probably waive it.
Application process.
It's a little more complicated.
I get it. Well, the commissioners would have the, apparently, the authority to apply or appoint somebody without any formal application process. And same with the League. It's up to them to appoint somebody without any application process.
We would certainly put that in a resolution, that you have the right to waive that requirement on.
Well, if we try to do an application process, we've got to throw dates and deadlines and advertise and everything else, which I'm fine doing that, too.
We have, we have to waive that for your appointments to this board.
Just based on the timing? Is that, do you agree?
This is a quick turnaround. I agree with that.
Okay. I don't, I don't know. I just was asking, that's why I was asking the legal side of this. Commissioner Howell?
I'm just, I'm just curious. On the term of bipartisan, what do you mean by that specifically? Are we going to be watching to make sure that this board is even Steven, all four parties, Libertarians or Democrats, Republicans, and unaffiliateds are basically equal, equal on this board? That's four, essentially, four divisions. Are we going to have, represent the makeup of the county? What does bipartisan mean exactly? And then first, and then second to that question would be, what about any other diversity requirements of this board in terms of geographic diversity or anything else? Racial diversity, are we going to define anything else requirements for this, these board appointments? I guess my third question would be this. Can our cab board, can our cab board members serve on this as well? Is there anybody precluded from serving, I should say it that way? Anybody that we would prohibit from serving on this board that we may know that would probably elected to be on that board? So three questions.
Commissioner Howell, those are great questions. I would say that, given the timeframe and the speed in which this has been developed, if you don't like the terms, vote against it. That's my answer to your questions.
Okay. Any other questions? I don't see any. So, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Chairman, we have the motion. Do it, who was, do you have a second?
I think Commissioner Lopez made a second.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
I'll just do an explanation and vote real quickly. I would like to see community groups throughout the community engage this process. And I want to exclude anybody. And I think we ought to be open to hearing from everyone, so I'm going to vote no.
Commissioner Cruz?
I'll explain to Commissioner Howell, if there was given more time and this wasn't rushed through, we could absolutely make sure that we fulfill your requests. Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
And I would like to mention that I'm very concerned. We've got a very active group with Sedgwick County Association of Cities. There's 20 cities that are represented in the county. Limiting this to 15 will obviously eliminate member participation from cities that are represented in the county. I think this is a very dangerous path we're going down, but in a way, it's, the recommendation was non-binding as part of the resolution. So I will vote aye. Okay, motion carries. Lot of work to do. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Anybody have committee reports? I don't see any, so next item, please.
Other.
Executive session, right. Did you say that?
Other.
Oh, other, I'm sorry. Under other, Commissioner Howell?
I just, you know, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to highlight the fact that I do plan to have another one of my informal coffee meetings this Friday, 1636 East Patriot Avenue in Derby, into Gymnasium, from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. Thank you.
Anybody else? I don't see any. Next item, please.
Executive session.
Mr. Chairman, if I could say something here. I think we're going to have one executive session this morning because of time, and that executive session will be the first one involving attorney-client, privileged meeting on pending lawsuits, and let's make that 20 minutes.
Okay.
If we can.
Okay. So you're, so the other executive session will move back?
We're going to have to delay that.
Okay, all right.
When are we delaying that till?
I would imagine December 1, but were they okay on December 1? For the next meeting, ma'am, December 1.
Okay, that's, timing is going to be okay on delaying that till December 1? Tanya? Okay, all right. Executive session. Commissioner Cruz?
I move that the Board of County Commissioners recess into executive session for 20 minutes until 11:29 for consultation with an attorney for the county regarding matters deemed privilege in the attorney-client relationship in order to discuss pending litigation, and that the Board of County Commissioners returns to this room from executive session at 11:29.
My second. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to do that in this room, I think? Yes, we're going to be in this room, so please vacate, and we will see you back in 20 minutes.